All right, I'll let you call to order this planning board meeting February first, two thousand seventeen. We'll start with the cabinet establishment of forum.
Yes, we do.
Start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, no, that's okay.
As I said that, I realized it's a new guy. I don't know. I'm Todd.
Brian Lenoit, excuse me.
Lenoit. Good old French name, right? All right. Any members to the agenda, anybody?
Paul, do you have anything to add to the agenda?
I just wanted, uh, the selectments report, I wanted to go over with you guys, but we can do that near the end.
We'll do that later, I think. Acceptance acceptance of minutes for December. Anybody see anything glowering at us?
I was not present for this, so. She's reflecting.
Is there any business, excuse me, is there any business to vote on at all tonight?
Tonight, no.
Okay.
Well, except for for um, if there's recommendations on what to move forward with the ordinance to the select board or.
Okay. Cause that we need five vote.
Yes.
Okay, so just note that the alternates are in then, tonight?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I just wondered.
I think you're gonna have to vote on the minutes, cause otherwise it's just me and Todd. John wasn't here.
I was not present.
You can't, they can't, can't be two of ya.
What's that, yeah.
It's gotta be a minimum of three, so.
And you were here for that meeting, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can read.
So we can't do the minutes again?
No, we can.
Oh, yeah, we can.
Yeah, Juliette was here.
Yep.
Juliette's gonna be.
Yeah. So Brian's first day on the board is as a voting member.
You?
Yep.
Couldn't have it any other way.
Might have to at some point, but it's a good start.
You all set with them, Todd?
I I'm all set with them.
I can move, I'll move to accept the minutes for the December seventh meeting.
I'll second it. All those in favor? Moving on, continuing business. Have you heard from Chip, or no?
He hasn't said, he hasn't said a word. Not a word.
I suspect he's surveying. She's, I I haven't heard anything yet, so I'm guessing. New business, we have none. We should. We want it.
We can come another, we can come another business.
That's right.
Yeah.
We can treat it worse.
You're gonna be other business instead of new business?
What happened to the public forum? Get away with that.
Well, we can't do that, but. Mr. Bailey, you can go first.
Yeah, you all set?
Um, now, what is it that you have, we should have had?
Well, well, this is my first, like I said. My name's Kenneth Bailey. I've lived in town for a long time. I know you know, but the rest of these other folks don't. The reason I'm here tonight is I bought a piece of property a year, almost a year ago. Well, it'd be, yeah, it'd be a year ago, and the twenty fifth of this month. And I gave my son, my wife, and my three grandkids a five acre lot to build a house on. And the person that, the client that I do a lot of work for, I bought the property off on him. And what I'd like to do, what I need to do, is need to sell one of the front lots. I created two front lots. That, you know, the second one, I'm gonna maintain ownership for five years, you know, down the road. But I need to be able to sell this one lot out front to pay for the property and be to to become out of debt, so. I had spoke with Paul about it a couple different times, and I come and seen him the other day, and I said, I wanna, you know, I asked when the next planning board meeting was. He said tonight, so I come here to, you know, to see you folks and, you know, get the approval. I'm not trying to create subdivision by no means. But some people have said, well, it's a minor subdivision or whatever, what have you. And, you know, if if I didn't, I haven't owned it for five years, so I don't know really how. So I'm here to find out which direction.
Well, first, we need a, we need a proper application. We have no idea what you're doing.
Yeah, well, let's see. I'm here, this is the first time I've been here, so.
Yeah, I know.
So, to figure out what information you folks need from me and what I need from you folks, so.
So the question, the, I I had, I didn't think it would be a problem for the board hearing the question as to whether or not he's creating a subdivision or if he's within his rights to subdivide one lot and sell it as he's maintaining ownership. As I understand it, and Anne's the one who's gonna straighten us out here.
Hi, Anne.
Hi.
That, uh, the one lot that he gave to his son is 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 not part of the subdivision law. He's allowed to give a parcel of land to a family member. Without it, without creating a subdivision in regards to selling one other lot, provided he keeps the third lot in his ownership. So the deal is, and he bought a piece of parcel of land one year ago. He gave a five acre back lot to to his son.
Okay.
In the family. He wants to sell the frontage lot and main, and keep the remainder of the land himself.
Do you live on it?
No, I live on the other side of the, well, a couple miles cross country, but I live right in town.
So it's not a house lot? Was the piece that you bought split off of anything?
No, I bought it as one forty four acre parcel.
Do you know when it was, when that forty four acre parcel was created?
A number of years ago, forty years ago, probably.
More than five?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, long, long, this this family's owned it for, like I said, forty, fifty years, so.
Where is it, Ken?
Right over on one twenty five in Durham.
So it has frontage on one twenty five?
Yeah, I got, there's two, two road frontage lots.
So I'd have to look at the statute to see whether his son's lot doesn't count. But the exemption for holding it, um, only applies if it's, if you live there, if it's your house lot. So if his son's lot doesn't count.
His son does come in with a sanguine, I can't say the word, sanguinegal relationship. He is exempt from subdivision by giving it to.
Right, but he still got three lots, then.
Well, his son's restricted from sale for five years.
I have to look at the statute.
Okay.
Can't pull up because we have.
The wifi's working.
It is?
Yeah.
Are we allowed to connect to it? Durham guest, maybe? Uh, what's the password?
Welcome one.
Huh?
Welcome one.
Capital?
Maybe it's not working. It was up for a moment, now it looks like it's out. Had it, that's not a way.
It's not connecting. Let's see if I can get it on my phone.
Are you pulling up the state statute?
That's what I'm trying to do. Does not create.
Which one are you into, town hall guest, town hall?
You've got three here.
Durham guest.
Durham guest.
Yeah. All right. A division of land accomplished by gift to a spouse parent.
Welcome one?
Did you sell it to your son?
No, I gave it to him.
Does not create a subdivision lot.
So that, so it has to be less than fifty percent of the retail value, right?
No, so that only counts if the donor, which would be this gentleman, has owned the lot or parcel for a continuous period of five years, immediately proceeding the division by gift in the lot, or parcel is not further divided or transferred within five years from the date of division. So that would, um, splitting up a lot.
First lot?
Huh?
So then he would be creating three lots?
Yeah, if he sold, so right now he's created two, which does not create a subdivision. But if he sells up that other lot, that creates three lots, and that's a subdivision.
Yeah.
So. I don't think there's any other exemption that would apply.
There's no family concern or why.
He has to have held it for five years first.
So if it had been his, if it, if he was his residence, then he would have been exempted.
Well, if it had been his residence, the third lot wouldn't count.
Right. A lot that he maintained for his personal residence would not count.
And I think that's a five year requirement as well. I can't find that one right now. Yeah, so I think that turns it into a subdivision.
Minor subdivision, not a major subdivision, so this.
Well, we don't have mi- major and minor, but, yeah.
Yeah. So, I guess, what do I need from you folks to to make this go forward?
You have to bring a subdivision application before the board.
Okay, so will I get that from you folks, or from?
You wanna come in and see me in the morning, we'll get you set up.
All right, yeah, good enough.
Just get all the paperwork for you.
All right, good enough. Thank you, folks, for your time. Like I said, that's why I'm here, to find out. Don't wanna be going doing something that I ain't supposed to do and get in trouble and. And there you go, and whatever, so thank you very much.
They'll come back to bite us.
Appreciate your folks' time, so.
All right, thank you. Good thing you did mention to me.
Exactly. Thank you. I'll see you tomorrow, Paul.
All right, thanks, man.
Later, Kevin.
Hi, I'm Barry Baldwin.
Barry Baldwin.
Uh, I wanna get on the agenda for the March first planning board meeting for a five lot subdivision. I get, if I can do it that way, or do I need you to come pick up the application first? But anyway, I wanna be on the agenda.
You got time enough, you go to block.
Okay. And I wanted to pick up, uh, if you still have a checklist for that kind of thing, so that I can give it to my surveyor to make sure he didn't miss anything?
You have to see me in the morning, Barry.
You have those, okay, yeah, I didn't know, it's been a while since I've been associated. I do have six plans, and I know it's not official, but I have them, in case you want them, to look at them, to.
We'll put them in the application, we can move forward with it then.
Okay, well, we'll have full copies next month when we come, but. I just brought six of these, just in case you, they wanted to look at it.
Where is it, where is it, just out of curiosity?
It's, uh, Granite Farm Hill Road. Oh, we, it used to be Boy Hill Extension. That hundred acre lot up there. I just sold one lot, so, and we're gonna, we're doing the five lot subdivision. But I brought these just, I know it's not procedure, but just as a courtesy, in case someone wanted to look at them.
Well, we'll just stick them in my office, and if someone wants it, they can come by and grab them.
That works. And if they have any questions, I have a larger one, if somebody wants to look at it, they can, but we'll be next, uh, next month. So basically, I just wanted to come in and get on the agenda, uh, see what you needed from me.
Well, it's good to have you.
I know.
I know, Barry, it's all home days, you know?
I know, I know. You didn't, you didn't sign my papers yet either, Todd, I missed you the other day, I'll get you.
But you didn't have.
I don't wanna interrupt your meeting, huh? Okay, well, I'll bring, let me bring them in the morning.
Yeah, bring them in the morning, we'll get you set up, and it'll take a little time, and we'll go through what it, what I know, which isn't enough, and we'll see if we can.
Sorry, Nick.
Both of us next month.
Oh, we'll be fine. I've been embarrassed before. Usually cause it myself, but that's.
Get along, no?
But I'm sorry to interrupt procedure, but I really, I thought that we had a, uh, used to have a, uh, public forum at first, so you could, and I've seen, I know better than to get into this huge thing, but I've seen it before, where somebody come in to ask questions, they'd be an hour of the meeting. But I was gonna make a shot.
Well, there still isn't the ordinance, the ability to come before the planning board for subdivision, but you've gotta have enough material to actually get through that process and then.
Oh, I understand, but.
Move to the next part.
Yeah, no, we didn't plan to be here until March first. But I just wanted to get here, get on the agenda, it doesn't hurt. It was my, uh, surveyor's suggestion.
Answering questions without all the material.
Yeah, no, and I wasn't even looking for that, I just was giving you a heads up.
I know.
And, uh, I I know when I.
That's why we don't do that.
I spend enough time with the planning board myself, so. I know. All right, good, I'll see you in the morning, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you.
Send that around before you leave, or?
I don't wanna interrupt your meeting, but if they want to, if they don't mind, you don't have much going on, do you? I lost twenty two years ago.
It really hurts, Barry. Go easy on us. Hurts.
I've never been easy, been a long one before.
What are you running for?
The one year term.
Oh, yes.
She didn't ask you what you're running from.
That'd be the sheriff. Everybody, I knew the answer to that, Paul, but then. Easy. Yeah, I was, uh, I guess it was two years, time, excuse me, time flies, I was, two years ago I was selecting.
Oh, you were?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I was four or five years selecting.
He quit and off.
I did, I did quit when the administrative assistant quit abruptly, when she talked me into running another term.
How many signatures are required?
I think it's twenty five.
I stayed because of her, and.
You don't have to sign it.
I'm gonna pass it along. I don't know, you start.
That's okay. That's okay.
You're gonna wish you did.
Now you're on my list.
Oh, gosh.
The right list, don't worry.
I don't have a bad list anymore.
No, I I lean in both directions, so I no longer have a bad list.
It's a good thing.
You got one of those jobs, it's pretty hard to stay off people's lists.
Yeah.
You know?
It's not pretty hard, it's impossible.
This, as does this board, you know, you can't please everyone.
Nancy?
I was wrong when I, I told him that I thought, so to understand that, uh, he has to own it five years before he can get the family exemption even of a house, a a house lot?
Well, before, before, I, does he have to own it five years to transfer it to a family member?
Exempt, yeah.
Okay.
Why?
Sophie, in the, in the first five years, if he gives a lot to a fam, or anyone gives a lot to a family member, that does not constitute a subdivision, but that stops it right there, so the second one would.
Right, so if you only create two lots, cause you transferred to the kid, that's not a subdivision.
Now, is that because of the five years, is my question?
Right.
Because right now, I mean, like, I've owned this land forever, if I wanna give one to my son, it doesn't have to be part of the subdivision.
Right, I think.
Exempt that one from.
If I'm wrong on that one, boy, I really got problems, cause I. All right.
A little closer to the ballot box.
Well, thank you to those who did. Thank you.
Thank you to those who didn't.
I said thank you for considering, for covering it.
All right, thank you, Barry.
See you later.
We'll see you in the morning.
See you, Barry.
I have to move, don't I? Does not create a subdivision lot.
That's it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then it has to be held for five years. Hi, I'm Anne, I'm sorry I'm late.
I'm Brian.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Brian, or, or, Anne is our go to with all technical questions.
So is, so is Brian our newest member?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have two alternates.
So I don't think you really need me anymore.
No, 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 no. We don't smoke it no more.
Easy.
Craziness.
You're here forever, you and Paul.
Yeah, they're gonna.
We held a vote earlier.
They're gonna chain us to a log in the basement.
Let's go.
All right, what's next?
All right. I just, I wanted the board to have the information that I had given to the select board in regards to how the ordinance in the town has been, um, basically how it's been focusing housing, where it's going in the future, and why some of those issues are coming up. And they're gonna come up before this board in the way that you craft future ordinance. The, this year, essentially what happened this year is we used up or consumed the majority of the, um, available subdivision lots in town. There's very little off the main road, there are no new subdivisions coming forward. There haven't been any in years, because it's been restrictive, uh, the ordinances are restrictive to subdivision. So what's left is, is the growth pressure, which is starting to accelerate significantly in Durham, is gonna apply itself to road frontage. At the rate that we've been going for the last forty years, that's about, which we did this year, thirty houses a year. So three hundred a decade, a seventeen and a half linear miles of rural road frontage will be consumed by mailboxes and driveways every ten years. If you take the map, which I, which is what I did just for something else to do here, I took the Durham's parcel map, and this actually isn't complete, Sand Hill subdivision isn't on here, and a few others. And you can see how dense the population areas are along the Freeport, Brunswick, Topsum, Lisbon area. The growth district, which is in the center here, really hasn't seen significant growth in a considerable amount of time. If we add frontage lots on the existing town roads, cause you can't really do much in the way of backlot development, you're about ten to fifteen years out of consuming all the available road frontage lots in the town. At that point in time, the only way to manage your financial stability in town is through tax increases.
That is, that's only if any one of those lots is, uh, for sale.
Well, and that's true, I mean, you're gonna reach max density, is what it comes down to. With the way the current ordinances are constructed, if you, it's a matter of supply and demand, if you can't expand your tax base, your existing taxpayers have to pay all the costs necessary to manage town, which is double digit tax increases for a considerable amount of time. You don't have the advent of high value shore frontage, high value lake frontage to sort of help subsidize. Durham doesn't really have any of those attributes. The ordinances are highly restrictive to business, and they're highly restrictive to subdivision. So it's, it's gonna essentially, the, the pro, the, and and it's not my town, I, these are just decisions that are coming up really close, really near in the future, the, the comp plan committee is working on this stuff. There's a lot of push to maintain open space and rural character, there's a lot of push to build houses. There's a lot of conflict going on here that has nowhere to go, and it's gonna be really, really difficult without properly crafting the, uh, the comp plan and the future ordinances to try to consider just exactly how the town wants to try to deal with this. I don't know what.
So what are we saying in this, like, um, what, what's the action item, I guess?
There's no action, it's just information, it's just a, it's just to try to, if you look at the graph on the, on the third page of that.
Really good information, I just didn't know we were bringing this to somebody.
You can see, since two ninety five was completed and one thirty six was expanded in, in the mid seventies, it's three hundred houses, essentially three hundred houses every ten years for the last forty years. And it's not gonna stop, it's actually, the, the, the thing that doesn't show up in the graph is that a significant part of the last decade was curtailed by the housing recession that started in two thousand and eight, and a significant part of this decade is also in that circumstance. The first four or five years of this decade, you know, two thousand ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, was, was relatively slow. My suspicions are that thirty or so houses a year is gonna move to forty or fifty, because the southern pressure is, is, it's, it's hard to explain how much pressure there is for Durham to grow right now.
Well, that southern pressure is also gonna drive up a lot values, which are going to make subdivision more financially feasible.
Correct.
For a contractor.
For developer, yeah.
For a developer.
Absolutely, I mean, just.
I mean, that's, that's what's gonna end up happening.
What did, we just saw two people come in here, you've never done a subdivision. Two people come in here, first month of, no, no.
There's another one in the works, too.
Second month of twenty seventeen.
But there are still some complications within the ordinance as far as the growth, um, the growth restrictions in our, in our, in our ordinance that hasn't been administrated properly to, to stay within the state guidelines, and could be open to challenge, uh, which restricts subdivision to five lots in the rural district. There's.
You're saying that part of our ordinance could be challenged by somebody?
Yeah, we, the growth, the, we, we have not followed the Growth Act correctly administratively in town in order to have the right to use it, to manage growth. We haven't done the work, there's been nothing done. So it's open to challenge.
Okay.
All right, and, and it's, as far as MMA is concerned, um, we shouldn't try to enforce it. We should try to comply before we try to enforce it.
Because.
What's MMA?
It's the Maine Municipal Association, it's kind of the sort of the legal, um, overseer for most of the small communities. It's, it's a kind of a think tank that manages a lot of what municipalities do, and they lobby just the state for different, um.
They publish a lot of advisories and.
Laws and so on. So it's a complicated issue here, because there's a lot of people that don't want subdivision, there's a lot of people that don't want growth, there's a lot of people are ver, you know, people are very, very clear about what they don't want. And I think the difficult part to try to get to with this is to try to find out exactly what it is about what people don't want, that they don't want. Okay, they don't want subdivision, but what is it about subdivision that they don't want? What is it about certain types of business growth that they don't want? Do they not like the visual part of it? You know, if you can find the mechanics of what they don't like about it, and answer to those concerns, I think a lot more avenues become open for Durham to expand its tax base. And there are some in town who are gonna be perfectly happy to let their taxes go up, two and three thousand dollars a year for ten or fifteen years, um, and just to keep Durham just exactly like it is.
They'll be the only ones left.
And they will, and that's true, but you, but the hardest part about this is that it has to be pretty inclusive in incorporating what people are trying to get to. And pretty important to try to figure out how to formulate that, to satisfy that, in order to get it through town meeting, which is where all of this stuff has to go.
So is this the kind of stuff the comp plan committee's looking at?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, so, yeah, these are things that we are definitely going to get into, and I think how we.
And, well, part of the reason that I brought it before this board is, cause once the comp plan committee's done, this is what's gonna focus what you, we will, you know, that you guys will do in crafting ordinance. I really, uh, would like to look at a little bit of the form based stuff, but it hasn't gotten a lot of traction.
Well, in the town, you mean, or?
There's a type, there's a type of ordinance called form based.
I'm a, I'm familiar with it.
Zoning.
Hasn't gotten traction in Durham, or you mean in Maine?
It's having a lot of difficulty getting a developer investment, because it's a, it's a format they're not familiar with. People like to do what they know how to do, they know what their dollar figures are, if they're out there doing the usual thing. So if you start making this thing a little bit too flexible, they just, that's all right, they'll wait.
Is that Brunswick going to form base code?
They're talking, Topsum's talking about it.
Topsum?
Which just seems a little odd to me, cause Topsum really, I don't, Topsum doesn't have it defined downtown, you know? There's certain parts of Topsum that it just, I, I don't understand how it's gonna help them do what it is they wanna do, but.
I think it was Standish that adopted a few years ago, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know how that's worked for them.
It hasn't, that's the thing, I've been in contact with several of the town managers in the communities that have started to try to utilize this, and it's been really difficult to get it off the ground once they've adopted it. They think it's a great tool, um, but they haven't got anybody stepping up to sort of be the poster boy, let's go see how this goes. You know, let's kinda close your eyes and, you know, head downhill.
I mean, you have to, you have to ratify the bill for you know what's in it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, anyway, just kinda what's coming, um, there's a lot about the previous comp plan that was, was done well, and, but one of the, one of the main reasons that the state didn't certify it is because the, the utilization of a growth district in town was not structured properly enough to relieve pressure from the rural area. So having the same size lot with fifty foot of frontage less in the growth district does not induce growth in the growth district, and it doesn't take the pressure off of the rural area.
We've talked about that.
We've talked about that.
And the fact that all of the, the majority of the pressure in, in housing at least is along the corridors. That are the employment corridors, you know, where folks are going to work. If you look, there's nothing on the Auburn end. There's very little coming on the Auburn end.
Let's keep it that way.
So, but you know, but in, in understanding that, if that's the case, sometimes the things that you really wanna look at is. You know, take the bus in the direction it's already going. You know, what do you do with the growth district? If that, if that's where the growth pressure is, is that where the growth district belongs? Does that make sense?
Has anybody looked lately to see if there's any lots left in the growth district that are, you know, considerable amounts of area?
I was trying to figure out where the growth district is.
I know, it's like.
But I think, I think we're kind of putting the cart for the horse a little bit in this because we don't, the growth district.
Could change.
Could absolutely change based on what we're hearing from, on the comp plan.
Well, the growth district can only change if the town votes to change it.
Right. So the, you know, the town's gonna vote on the comp plan, on everything we have in the comp plan.
But then.
And then we have to change the.
But then our ordinance will have to change. Right.
That's step two.
The comp plan group, I mean, certainly, I mean, we're, we're talking about a lot of different things. I think when the comp plan group starts to get a little bit of traction. And actually getting it into work, like gets out of the vision statement mode, I think we, we need to sit down this board. With the comp plan group and.
And select.
They should, yeah.
Different meetings as well.
We should be up on this because.
Yes.
There's no sense in doing it two or three times.
But there's really nothing we can do from now until when that comp plan's finished and then when it's voted approved and then once we start.
I'm not an advocate to wait until things are ready to start moving.
No, 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 I'm not either, but I'm just thinking like, um.
Help them along the way.
I mean, I think what needs to start among this board, in my opinion, because you're already doing ordinance work, is, you know, what does the future of ordinance work look like for us? What, what do we wanna focus on? You know, where do we think that some of this stuff is gonna wind up?
I don't see how we make ordinance changes before the comp plan's finished. Or before, at least we have a sense of what, where the comp plan is headed.
I don't think you make ordinance changes. I think you prepare yourself to make ordinance changes by knowing just exactly what it is you wanna do with ordinance.
Well, it doesn't matter what we wanna do if it doesn't match what the complan says.
Yeah, you won't, you're not gonna be, you're not gonna be ignorant of what the.
Yeah, we would, we definitely would. I mean, we're gonna come to.
That's the growth district in the middle.
Oh, we need to make that better.
For background.
I mean, there were.
Everything else were residential?
Everything else is rural residential or resource, yeah.
I mean, half the people last night, so they didn't want any change at all. So I don't know how the comp plan.
But then they're the same people that bitch that their taxes are going up. No, I hadn't, I don't remember where it was.
I mean, I, this, you got a difficult task. There's no doubt about it.
Taxes have doubled since I bought my damn house.
That wasn't that long ago.
That was two thousand nine. They've doubled.
And they're gonna double again in the next ten years. They're gonna double again in the next ten years. And it's gonna, and, and there are folks that are perfectly willing to allow that to happen. And there are folks that are frustrated that that'll happen. And there are folks that really don't know how to, you know, it's a matter of supply and demand in my mind. And, and if you, if you don't want a lot of tax increases, you've gotta increase the supply. It'll help keep property values down. If you change or include along in the growth area, the, the heavily populated portions along that have already been started to fill out. These areas up along Freeport, Topsom, Brunswick and Lisbon are not utilizing a lot of municipal service. Because they're going the other way on the roads. They're using short sections of roads to get in and out of town. In our current ordinance, you can only put thirty-four houses every mile. You can't pay for the road on thirty-four houses a mile. You can't, it costs seven hundred and fifty bucks a year to, to manage the road in front of one home. And they only get six hundred and fifty a year from them, for the municipality share of the annual tax. They're going backwards by twenty-two percent. Annually, just on the road. That doesn't mean, never mind the municipal services here, the fire department picking up the trash. You know, paying the, the town clerks and those folks.
It's finding the balance, you know, because there's a lot, there were a lot of voices in the room last night that feel like the more growth there is residential. Means it's another family with a couple of kids going into the school system, driving costs there.
I don't buy that.
Right, right. But that's, that's the voice that says, you know, we don't wanna grow is because the fear is the more families come, the more cost that is to, to the town.
But I think the point you made last night, John, which is the point you're making now, is that these pressures, this is gonna happen anyways. I mean, you know, you and I had the same motivations for coming here, which is gonna keep driving people to come here, so.
Yeah, that's not gonna change.
Yeah, so.
There's some significant misnomers in town regarding subdivision and a lot of it was based on the early subdivision experiences in town with some standard roads. And things weren't done well and people wind up carrying the bill and nobody likes to do that. I think that John's point in that. You know, the Patriot Way is a neighborhood. It's not, you can't do that on one thirty-six. The kids can't go ride their bikes and hang out in the front of the house. And the kids across the street come running over and stuff. It's not the same experience. And, and those sorts of things need, people need help to understand. How that's valuable to town and how it can be done in a way that doesn't take away from what they appreciate in town. And so, you know, Anna and I had shared some ideas on, on managing open space. You know, that, that allows for growth to be taken off of the, off of the road front, pulled back beyond the open space a little bit.
Yeah.
Working in cluster housing circumstances, you know, I would like to see, and, and Anne thinks I'm pioneering this because no one else has been able to do it. But the, the, using the subdivision open space requirement as a corporate application rather than the four acres of swamp.
Just like they spoke about last night, yeah, yeah.
So I think that if, if it's, if you, the reason I wanted you guys in on this is because this is gonna focus where your work is in the future. And it's a lot nearer than you think. So if you guys can start discussion through ordinance work as to what the future of ordinance should look like. In Maine, in Durham, while the comp plan is committing, competing its work. You're coming out of the box where the comp plan is voted into work with presenting to the select board immediately. How the legislation in town needs to apply to that. Cause the place that the last comp plan failed was implementation. It's completely implementation.
Is there a group or a person or a resource that could come in as a peer review? And go through our ordinance and talk about opportunities in our ordinance and, and ordinance structure? And make recommendations that these are the weaknesses we see in your ordinance that should have more deliberation.
What do you mean weaknesses?
I don't know, you know, I mean, every time I look at another ordinance from another community, it's like, oh, that's a neat provision, that's a neat provision. Is there somebody who looks at a lot of ordinances out there and, and has eyeballs on a lot of different things and, and.
Maybe it's you, John.
No. Not a lawyer.
No, they definitely have those types of consultants, but I still think that with the comp plan process going on right now, it's almost like.
You need to be hot on that tail.
Yeah, but, but like having that review would be perfect for when the comp plan, like at the last, you know, have it done once. Like at the end. Cause we'll have to redo the ordinance.
Oh, we certainly have to redo the ordinance, but you know, while we're restructuring it, is there things we wanna address?
So I, I think the problem is. This is not gonna be popular. There are no good consultants in the state that are doing that. Um, and I'm serious, you know, we had Av Cog in. Before you came on and that was not helpful. We had the code officer from Bowden. Sorry, I was not impressed. Um, I had people deal with GP Cog, also not impressed. I've had someone have, one of the law professors from Maine Law did theirs and that was a show. You know, the problem is, and frankly, I see this as a business opportunity, that I'm not too involved yet, but, but there's no one doing it well that I've seen. Um, some of the big guys that have, that are doing it are bringing folks from out of state a lot to, as consultants and we can't afford them. But that's, like, that's why this ordinance sucks. And this ordinance process sucks is because we're doing it internally. Like, if you paid someone like me to do this, I could pull this ordinance apart and put it back together and it would be great start to finish. But we can't pay someone to do that. So we're all half-assing it in our free time. And honestly, I don't have a super incentive to prioritize this over my paying job. Um, and neither do you and, yeah, yeah, and neither do you and neither does anybody else who's chipping in. And that's the hard part. This is not a great way to redo an ordinance.
Well, and you've had a consistent leadership model, I think, in town that was, is just trying not to spend any money.
And I get it, yeah.
And I understand that too, but, but some of this stuff to fix it properly is gonna require the investment. And it'll come back around, but it's hard to be the person at town meeting taking the hit for putting it forward. So I've actually tried to have some conversations with GP Cog about regional planning. You know, that, I mean, the southern part of the state has gotta start to get smart on regional planning here. Or it's, you just can't do it town by town when the entire region is impacted.
Yeah, I already do that stuff. There are a few communities that tend to do regional planning, but they tend to be the bigger guys. Like Portland South, Portland, Scarborough, or, you know, Lewiston, Auburn.
You know, Cape Elizabeth and, you know, but, but the, you know, Portland is, Portland is the, is the driving factor around most of the communities. That, that we live in, you know, and, and if some of the way that transportation corridors are handled, some of the ways that. All of those regional applications start to come into play. I mean, if, if fifty percent of Durham works in Portland. Regional planning is an important thing. It's really, and it needs to be an important thing from their perspective. Because what they're doing is affecting us far more than what we're doing is affecting them. Uh, and you could start to get coherent ordinances from town to town from, so that you start to have, you start to wind up with, without having little. Really weird little individual applications every time you cross the town line, that there's some cohesive application to what's going on. And at least if nothing else, people are looking at it that way, even if they're not driving the bus as far as policy is concerned. But anyway, I, I understand you wanna wait till the comp plan's done and my fear in most of this, and it's, and it is a fear. Is that the, the wheels of government move really, really, really slow. You guys are two years out to getting, hopefully, if, if everything kinda clicks, you guys are two years out to getting a, an approved comp plan. If you wait until the comp plan is approved to start doing ordinance work, you're another two to three years out or two to five years out from there. Now you're halfway to where I said you were going that you don't wanna go. So if you have prepared in some measure, or at least mentally prepared in some measure. To, to be moving really rapidly, once the program is laid out and voted on and approved. You know, it's kinda like the car's loaded, you know, as soon as they give us yes, we're going, you know, it's not.
I wonder, yeah, def- I completely agree with you on that. I'm just trying to think of how that would be, how, how we'd do that. Maybe like on the comp plan, if we go, start going topic by topic. And then, so if someone, if we start on housing and, and we, we have the public meeting and everyone seems to agree. Cluster, cluster subdividing is the way to go and not along the streets, then we start looking at that. At that time, do you know what I mean, like?
And, and Anne's gonna be, again, better at this. You already know that they wanna manage farming. You already know they wanna manage recreational space. You already know that they wanna manage some open rural application, okay? So there's already sort of a basic outline about what you can expect. You have to include in the comp plan, which will have to include how your ordinances are constructed. So if you can start to compartmentalize your ordinance in looking at those particular issues. As, as the community comes forward to express to you what it is that they want. Most of those, you, you are, you're building the outline for, to go.
That's good.
And this is, you know, ordinance work, it's a little bit like dentistry without Novocain, you know, there's really nobody wants in on it. And then there's no way out of it once you get started. Um, and the recovery time is long.
I mean, I, I'm seeing, you know, this is a two-year process to do the comp plan, you know, maybe after the first year, we start to work in parallel. Not to draft our ordinance, even if we don't intend on implementing it for two years out, you know, so that. The compliance approved and then we finish out polishing the ordinance piece because.
I mean, I think it would make sense to.
It's, it's hard for us to get through it in a year, just making the changes we're making now.
And I think it would make sense to continue the momentum instead of, you know, people remember what the comp plan was about. And then you've got kind of this complimentary ordinance thing, whereas if it ends up being two years later, people are gonna be checked out of the whole thing.
So I mean, something I think that we could start doing is having a workshop or multiple workshops. On tools to manage growth. So finding, I can't believe I'm saying this, a planner. You know, to come in and talk about, cause there are a bunch, I mean, there are a bunch of tools. So do you encourage cluster subdivisions? Do you do it through multiple zoning? Do you do it through incentives? Do you, you know, how do you manage growth? And try to push it towards, towards the areas that you want and away from areas that you don't want. Um, and so I don't know if that's what Paul's heading towards, but workshops like that to get us starting to think about the tools we might have. To accomplish whatever goals come out of the comp plan.
To the public meetings to educate the public, because a lot of this is really what, what they want, right?
Right.
So, so we would have to learn first what those tools are.
Right.
And then we'd go to the public and say, hey, guys, you know, this is, what, what do we want here?
I think there's huge opportunity for a comprehensive planning committee and the planning board to have conversations and learn about these tools in a workshop.
Absolutely. Is this something Av Cog and, and GP Cog can do, like this planner type?
Um, probably. There are also.
GP Cog has been contracted by the comp or if it's final yet, but is in process to be contracted to help with the comp plan.
Stephanie?
Stephanie, yeah.
So is she someone that maybe could.
The main, the main part about that is for, is, is for, um, the data part.
Okay, so you know what's going on.
I think one of the other things that you guys might wanna talk about and consider, and it's gonna require a little bit of conversation and a little pressure. Is to whether or not you wanna go outside the board to do your next ordinance. Do you hire a professional based on what's starting to come forward through the comp plan to start to lay out the form work for where you want your future ordinance to go? Or do you guys wanna do it in-house?
Oh, I, I can't do it in-house.
So where do we find somebody?
Well, finding somebody, you have to find the money first.
Are there other, are there local community or adjacent communities that are similar in size and, and, and. Infrastructure that have been through this recently and, and who have they hired as a consultant, because I.
Yeah, uh, North Armith has hired, has hired GP Cog to do most of their comp plan rewrite. They've done a considerable amount of it there. Most of the small communities you'll find, it's been my experience anyway, I, and, so I'm talking from my experience, not from an overall review of the state. Most of, most of small communities are like Durham and they all kinda sit in their little room and try to do what they can with it. They oftentimes are restricted financially. Um, there's a, there's a reticent to go before the town and try to sell the fact. That we need a pretty good chunk of money to kinda lay this stuff back in line. Um, and it can be a pretty hard sell. You know, frankly, considering who it is that comes to town meeting to vote, a very small group of people. Um, the majority of them are trying to be ultimately fiscally conservative and there isn't a lot of time in a one-day meeting to educate to them. As to why it's important. And if they don't think it's important, then you, you know, you, it's, it's, it's a, it's a wonderful process in many ways. But the democracy that went on last night at the, you know, at the comp plan meeting is where that kinda work gets into the community. In ways that's understandable and it's not fear reaction that's going on. You guys are actually starting to understand that. There, there's gonna be a need to take action on some of this stuff and you can't, you know, you can't put a house fire out with a teaspoon. It's just that simple, so.
If, if the comp plan committee has a budget to hire consultants, is there any way to leverage some of that, some of those funds? With a consultant that's already on board? I had asked Stephanie that when we had an interview with her and she didn't really react like, oh yeah, that's great, we could. I was really kinda surprised, cause I, I, I kinda expected when I asked the question of GP Cog, okay, we have you in for this process. What support can provided in the next step? And she really didn't, she kinda looked at me like, what are you talking about, the next step? So. Um, I don't know if I didn't ask the question right or what, but I was like, okay.
So this is my, my own significant bias, is I think planners are great for giving you the ideas. I don't like planners writing ordinances. A lot.
But I think that's what we're looking for, our ideas that we're gonna need to complement the comp plan or come to the comp plan.
But I think that's what we're looking for, our ideas that we're gonna need to complement the comp plan or come to the comp plan uh, board with or committee with to say, hey, these are the what we, this is what we learned, this is what we're hearing. Um, uh, we might wanna look into this uh, in the future to add to the comp plan or complement.
I'm gonna get on the same horse that Anne is on, alright? The way that we're trying to fix this ordinance is not gonna work. We need to go before the board, the select board and the and the budget committee and convince them that there needs to be a substantial amount of necessary funds made available with which to reconstruct. And this thing here can go in the trash and start over. Um, and and that, I think, is probably the most coherent way to get a coherent ordinance back out of the program. It's you you know, right now, you guys started off trying to make a horse and wound up with a camel and I'm there isn't enough surgery to fix it in my mind, in this particular ordinance. So that's where the trickiness comes in, is to try to sell to folks. One is why it needs to be replaced and two is why it's gonna take a little bit of money to do it well. And it needs to be done well, because not having been done well for fifteen years has hurt everybody in town.
Completely agreed. The thing that I'm I'm, are we talking about going in front of them at, cause we have to do it at a town meeting, right?
No, the I mean, you can ask the board a selectman for money.
Petitioning the board a selectman, and it's not gonna happen this year. The year's lot likely, it's they're too far into the budget process. So we're looking at, do you wanna spend another year taking uh, backlot ordinance apart? Or taking, you know, various parts of the ordinance that we're hitting our heads on and see if we can't try again to fix another little piece of this. And this is the conversation that I think that you guys really ought to be having about where where are you going next year with anything other than applications?
I mean, so I think, just talking through the process, so the comp plan sets priorities. That's what they do. They're not necessarily setting strategies. They set priorities. Here are our priorities. We wanna protect farming, we wanna protect, you know, recreational space, and we wanna wanna grow in limited areas or in this amount or, you know, whatever. And here's what our population projections are and where we want it to be and da-da-da-da. So the comp plan really sets broad-based goals. And then how I see it is a planner can come in and say, hey, here are some really cool ideas for how to work towards your goals. And then you need someone who's actually gonna do the drafting. And I don't
As a lawyer?
You can't afford a lawyer. Honestly, um, you can't, we can't afford a lawyer to do it, and honestly, they they don't do this.
So who does it?
No one does it well.
So no, so
Seriously, no one does it well.
That means there are no ordinances are in our whole state that are well that have been done well.
Correct. I have not come across, I mean, uh, seriously, they're all done bits and pieces.
We shouldn't feel too bad.
Honestly, ours is not, like
Well, why don't we get a New Hampshire or Mass one?
We could.
But um, Mass, they're done pretty well. New York's are, some of them are done pretty well.
So I think there are some really good models out there. Part of the complication of this model, this model was developed as a shoreline zone model back in the seventies. And it was produced by the Maine State DEP to protect shoreline zone, because there was so much water pollution in Maine. That they wanted to start to clean up the water, work with the the uh, subsurface wastewater systems, pull the overboard discharges back away. So they started to use this as a means of restricting growth and use in the wa- in the shoreline zone areas. They also encouraged the communities to take that format and move it into the entire land use of the town. And in my mind, after watching forty years of what's happened with this particular type of structure, is it's failed miserably. As an as a general land use model. It's worked very well as a shoreline zone model. So I think getting some outside ideas, getting somebody who who can work with a planner as a planner and understand that this is an annual thing. And what I had mentioned to the select board is there's a type of of computer programming, it's called PID programming. And what it is, is you you tell the program what you wanna do. The program makes adjustments based on what it sees coming, and then at the end of it, the the derivative part takes the conclusion and changes the parameters going back in the sec- next up, the front again, so that the next time you run the machine down the road, it starts to hone its performance. And that's what a town planner does with the type of folks that Anne's talking about working with. So it's becomes an ongoing relationship of constantly monitoring the data, which no one's looked at the data in town until I pulled some of this stuff out and started mining. The planner, the town planner, CEO, or whoever you call the person doing it here, has to be able to continually mine that data annually. Evaluate whether or not it's in compliance with where you wanna go, make some readjustments and stick it back in at town meeting with those improvements to carry forward into the next year and constantly rolling this thing forward. And that's the way that I see the best way to manage it.
So when we did the, I I think I already know the answer, but I'm just gonna ask the question anyway. I was really surprised when with the cost for using um, the GP COG services to do the comp plan things because of the supplement money from the state DOT and planning. There were various grants.
Forestry's got a little
Forestry, et cetera, that kinda offset our local cost in order to accomplish the comp planning goals. Nothing in zoning?
I don't think so.
Well, they have, they pulled the SPO, I mean, that's the current administration pulled the SPO right out of the program immediately. So, yeah, there's they hit that that's been dismantled.
Cause I was kinda pleasantly surprised when she said, you know, well, there's this grant and this grant and there's money in these opportunities to help rural communities that don't have a finer resource.
She also did say that the majority of additional funds that used to come from the state for this have been have been gone for a while. Um, when the SPO was dissolved. So, anyway.
The money we send to Augustine, swing it somewhere back.
Good luck. Lots to think about.
Yep. Well.
Alright, so what are we doing with all the drafts we already have?
Throwing them out so I don't have to finish them.
So are we, um, I'm I'm hopeful we have something to bring to the board?
I don't know. It's not done. I haven't looked at John's road ordinance. Like, I have no idea what he means. Know what you wanted me to do with that. I mean, we've made some changes. If we can get my computer up on the screen, I can go through some of them. But I haven't incorporated the roads yet, um, cause I couldn't figure it out. And we're just, I mean, it's bits and pieces.
So I'm sorry, you're in the middle right now of drafting a new ordinance?
Trying to make some revisions to the system.
Mostly rearranging.
Right.
Does this board feel that having a town planner, at least a someone in the office doing town planning on a regular basis is is a unnecessary attribute for Durham?
I think it would, depends on the money.
I don't think we're, you know, I think we're heading in that direction and there's no doubt that our town hall, as our community grows and gets more complicated, town town halls kinda have to grow. The trick is paying for it. You know? Coming up with a plan that shows us the direction we need to head towards and finding that balance of trying to keep it palatable.
Improving the push is coming, right?
The push has been here for forty years. The end result is coming. If you look at the way that the growth has gone in Durham, it's already, it's been going on. It's been ongoing for forty years and no one's been looking at it. And they've been continually crafting ordinance over the last fifteen years to try to stop it, and all it's done is exacerbate it. And because you can't, you can't maintain a low tax base and a rural character in a town with a house every three hundred feet down the road. You just can't do it.
Well, especially when you get a high school like we do.
Yeah, there's a lot of complicated issues, but um, somebody in my mind, the one of the biggest things that's been lacking administratively in town over the last fifteen years is someone paying attention to the data and the circumstances around growth and use.
I don't think anybody's even looked.
No one has. There's been no one's, so I, in my opinion, and it's just, and I'm not, it's not my tax base. You know, somebody in town needs to take on at least some of the rudimentary tasks of planning. And that's what planning is, is managing the data, watching the way that things are developing and and what those impacts are. I'm a little surprised that Durham can't afford it. I know Bodenham has a town planner.
One of the first comprehensive planning meetings I went to when we met the consultant who presented last night. Um, he worked with Bodenham and people around the table were pretty surprised that Bodenham had a town planner. Um, so I guess
And your previous comp plan from fourteen years ago recognized that a town planner or CEO was gonna be an important attribute and a necessary function to moving forward and maintaining where Durham wanted to go and the implementation by the select board for some, uh, most of this stuff was never done.
How long you been here?
Almost three years, yeah.
It took, so it took twelve years to bring in a good CEO and get you up to a a regular, um, an hour, more than a afternoon a week.
Half of what I'm doing is actually the planner.
No, I totally, no, totally agree.
So I think we know where the bottleneck is, you know, as to why we don't have a planner. I mean, I
So it's a, it's gonna be an interesting conversation over the next couple of years, and it's really gonna sort of define it as to where you guys go, and you're gonna get a lot of, I think you're gonna get a lot of folks in the community that wanna understand more about what the ord- most people don't have a clue what the ordinances are. The select board hasn't read the ordinance. I mean, you can't run a town when you don't know the laws, but um, I find very, very few people know much of anything about it. You guys are gonna be the most well-informed. And you can help people understand why it's been very difficult for the taxpayers in town who have to come before this board to try to get things, to try to get use permits. You know, what's, what are the significant factors and and you're gonna need to be able to speak to that too.
And also as development increases, the chances for um, risk, you know, and maybe some legal battles will increase as well. You know, so that's another reason why we should really sharpen our ordinance.
Yeah, I I don't see, I, yeah, maybe. I guess I'm not sure. I haven't looked at that part that that, you know, to see. I mean, I'm looking forward through the lens, looking backward, and that hasn't been the case. So what I see, what I see has already been happening in my mind, has the momentum to most likely be what's going to continue to happen. That doesn't mean new things won't happen, but
I mean, like new types of development, different things that we've never seen before, you know?
Well, you're gonna get a lot of pressure for subdivision. As property values increase, then developers start looking at parcels of land that can be turned into subdivisions. Uh, you know, um, there's a lot of stuff. But, anyway.
Do, Paul, just quickly, do you see, based kind of on your experience, do you see pressure coming to Durham for rental housing, like apartment? Do you see people come, who would come to Durham and say, I wanna build apartment buildings or Cause we don't really have a lot of that currently.
We don't.
Don't have any of it. It's just besides the accessory apartments. You got the one spot down off of the off of Pink and Brook Road, where there was the condos there and that's it, yeah.
I mean, I just know, I mean, it's been a while since I've been involved in the affordable housing world, but I mean, I know that I know that there's more, there's more and more kind of pressure to spread that out so that you don't have, you know, I think there's this more pressure to kind of have it spread out into some of the smaller communities.
Well, part of the requirement by the state in the growth ordinance, in order to restrict growth using a growth ordinance, is you have to be, you have to manage and include the inclusion of low-income housing.
Objections to the, to the actual comp plan.
And this has to be documented, and you have to do annual reports to the state, how you're satisfying those particular requirements and by what means. So, you know, this home rule thing is just a way for the state not to have to do their job. Um, but if the towns don't don't utilize the necessary requirements under the laws that allow them that type of rule, everybody's losing. Okay, so, you know, growth ordinances can be great if they're implemented correctly. And and there's a reason to implement them in certain ways and construct them in certain ways. And the comp plan is the one that's supposed to help figure that part of it out, you know? So
Back when the that comp plan was done, we tried to get some easier, some uh, rental, some easier ways to do rental housing. And there was pushback against it. And that's why the the it's so restrictive, you know?
Oh, but the, but today's world, there's a a much higher degree of the population are renters now than they were coming out of two thousand and four, two thousand and five.
But, you know, I can understand the restriction, though, if you, what does the uh, the renter market bring to the community? You know, does it, is it increasing the revenue enough to the town to offset the the density? You know, I I, you know?
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good question. It's a good point.
If if I'm a developer building a a rental unit, I'm gonna push because, you know, that's a way I can make revenue for my business, but
What amount of taxes do we get?
This side of the table, what does, what does a rental bring to the community? Other than solving a requirement to have a lower-cost housing option to meet?
Well, it increases density. But it also increases municipal services.
And more likely to, too, unfortunately.
Well, you, but you could look into, I mean, there are I think what needs, I think the important part here is to step out of the classic model. The the sort of historic classic model. I mean, what if your, what if your condominium was for fifty-five and older?
No, absolutely.
You know, I mean, there are ways that, and there's a lot of the, a lot of folks my age and older that are are would be considered low-income. You know, that really just, you know, we worked hard but haven't had a chance to save much, and really don't have much to do. And it's, we're running near the end of the road here, and you know, we'd rather not crash in the end of the cul-de-sac. It'd be nice if we had a small apartment or something, and a lot of our parents have been doing that, you know, they're downsizing, they're trying to live on social security. So there's, I think that if the 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 i- the issue with most of these things is to try to hit it with as broader brushes you can and see how to be as inclusive. And and that's why a growth, a planner is so important to a growth ordinance, you know, because that can be a way to satisfy some of those requirements without the additional municipal burdens.
Well, if one of the, and if one of the goals, I mean, if, you know, the idea is to make the community senior-friendly, I mean, I know that in places where senior housing has been built, I mean, it's serving the people who are already living in the community who can't afford their house, they can't afford the maintenance, so I mean, it's providing an opportunity for some of those folks to stay in the community and stay involved, so.
Yeah, we're not working anymore, so we're, our income just dropped thirty percent. Have a little nest egg and we'll move into a, you know, a a smaller apartment at half the cost and stay in our hometown. And yeah, there's all of that comes into play.
Grandkids are still around, they want us to be close to grandkids and But if you did something like that, could you keep your cap of um, building permits? So if you had a um, uh, over fifty-five community with, say somebody came in and just wanted to build thirty houses, and your your building permit cap is at thirty, is that a way to manage growth? So so that your cap is done with one subdivision and you're done for that year?
So that's, it's a great question. What's the purpose of a growth ordinance? Is it to restrict building or is it to manage growth? And the growth ordinance we have was strictly just to stop people from building in town. And it can be used in that way if you want. But again, now you're getting back into the town planner part of things, you know? You can manage growth by cutoff limits, or you can manage growth by planning. And I, you know, frankly, cutoff limits haven't helped Durham much. I just don't, I just don't see that it has proven itself to be effective in managing in in maintaining the direction the town wants to find itself in ten years from now, cause it didn't do it in the last fifteen. So I, you know, that's, to me, again, I'm looking forward through a backward lens, but it's time to start looking at what hasn't been working. And, you know, not put it back through the hamburger mill, you know, it once was steak and we'll try to eat it in hamburg- as hamburger and see if enough pickles and mustard, we can get it down. I'm not, I don't know that that makes sense, but I don't get to decide this stuff.
I'm hungry now, thanks.
And the important part for you guys is you're, you know, is is how do you frame the conversation? How do you steer the conversation? How do you help everybody at the table with completely disparate ideas about what to do? That they can all get what they want if we do it right? So it's worth doing right, and it's worth spending the money to do it right.
Is there a possibility of getting a part-time planner? Like we do at Five G?
Already have a part-time planner.
I know. This is where I'm going.
Put on your planner hat, right?
You have to, you have two hats hanging in your office now.
I know.
So if we're looking at the, so if we're looking at this town meeting that's gonna happen in a couple of months. What, if we wanna put this ordinance in front of it, what's our timetable?
We need to have it really quickly, we, couple of weeks here, we can get whatever, and I'm sorry.
No, I was supposed to have it done this weekend.
If we can just get what we, what the work that you've done compiled into it and to the document as one piece, then you can, we can bring it before the board.
Okay.
If we could have it for next Tuesday's meeting, that would be great and then at that point, I can go ahead and.
Next Tuesday? Oh, the select board or comp?
The select board, this has to go to the select board as a recommendation.
We have a comp plan meeting too.
It is, then I think it's next Tuesday, isn't it?
Yeah.
Why have somewhere to be next Tuesday?
So, that would be, that would be best, cause then we've got a few other places it's gotta go for review before.
And what's the deadline to get on the warrant?
I don't remember and I'm sorry, I can get that for you, but it's not coming to me off the top of my head. I have to re-remember it every spring and I forget it immediately after town meeting.
Is this something that we think is doable or do we think we would like to save this for next time?
No, we have to get this in.
Yeah, we have to, yeah.
There's one other inclusion I wanted in this.
Yeah? So they're taking orders, yeah?
I asked the board, uh, it's, it's gonna go into, um, the fees portion. I asked the select board at the last select board meeting to, um, allow for an exemption of building permit fees. For anyone whose house is burned down in town that was their principal residence and intends to rebuild. So we have a certain exemptions, there's an exemption for municipality from the fee but not the permit. I would like to also include a line that exempts. Someone whose house is burnt, from the fee but not the permit. And that should be a pretty easy one to throw in there, right?
There is, uh, what are you talking, um, I'm not seeing an exemption for the town.
I think under fees that there's a, there should be.
So I'm under administrative procedures fees, so this is Article Six, conditional use. Oh, you want the building fee?
Yeah, building fee.
That's not even.
Permit application.
I think it's down in administrative.
Article eight.
Article eight, okay.
So no meetings reflected next week for comm- planning board, uh, for comp planning or selectman or anybody.
Cool.
What's that?
There are any out, um, doesn't it come out like Friday or?
Municipal, oh, so it says municipal or public education structures, no fee.
Yes, you got it.
Should be a selectman's meeting next Tuesday.
Yeah, it's not on the calendar.
It's not on the calendar?
It's like stuck in between websites, I think is.
Calendar's up and.
And our comp meeting is the sixth, right, Monday?
That's what I was looking to confirm, I think it's Monday, not Tuesday.
I wanna take John's word for it, cause he showed up tonight at six thirty.
I did too, I, but I was sitting in my car, cause I couldn't remember, was it six thirty or seven?
It's Monday, comp is Monday, next week.
You say you can never put on your phone.
I'm done talking, if anybody else has anything else they want.
Well, yeah, that's all I do, yeah. Maybe it will now be wireless. Did we wanna talk about the, um, moratorium?
How did that go, Tom? Only by fire or by other natural disaster?
Well, the, how did that go?
There was no discussion from what I saw, really, it was like, okay.
Well, I didn't get, I didn't say other natural disasters to the board.
Okay.
I only said fire and they said, okay.
Well, we're submitting the whole thing and, you know, we just.
Well, the only concern I have is if we have a natural disaster, we're gonna have a lot of houses destroyed.
Yeah, if they get a big flood or a hurricane or something like that, you're gonna, and it's, you're gonna, that's, that's a little bit too much to consume.
Just for the fee.
So, under residential structures, it says twenty-five cents per square foot of floor area, minimum fee a hundred dollars. This fee shall be waived for. This fee shall be waived for a permit to reconstruct. Then I spelled that wrong, any residential structure.
Any, any principal residential structure. Wanted to be your house, not your rental house.
Any residential structure that was the applicant's primary residence.
Yes.
Structure destroy by fire where the. Structure was the applicant's primary, so does it have to be a hundred percent destroyed?
Yeah, I was just thinking exactly that when you threw it down.
Yeah. It's a tear down and rebuild, cause they're gonna wind up with, with higher taxes when they're done rebuilding, cause they're gonna have a new house that's gonna be evaluated higher.
Does it have to be within a certain amount of time?
I would, well, maybe, I suppose, but if they pull the permit within one year.
A year, hmm.
This fee shall be waived for a permit to reconstruct any residential structure just completely. Destroyed by fire where destroyed structure was the applicant's primary residence. And where the application is submitted. And one here of.
Thank you, Ann.
You got it.
Well, as far as the part ordinance went. They seemed like they took it under advisement, I guess, if they wanted to think about it. I didn't get much feedback.
No, it was pretty much inconclusive.
I hoped, I hoped it would, but, I don't know. I think maybe I'll just keep, keep pushing it.
So what's next on that?
Well, if they don't recommend it forward, you can't come up at town meeting, you have to select the, you've only got three ways for it to come to town meeting. Either the select board recommends that it be put on the docket. Um, the, uh. Public can petition the select board to put it on the docket or the public can go out and get signatures. And have it placed on the docket. So, if the plant, if the select board doesn't take your recommendation that it be included and included. The only other way is to get out in the street and try to get signatures to have it included.
It won't have time, we've already lost enough time now to do that.
I guess you'd have to ask Ruth about how much time would be necessary and I don't know exactly how many signatures are needed either. I'm not, I'm not up on that part.
Two months.
No.
No, I think it might be a percentage of the last election.
Percentage of the last federal election, which was the one we just had, so. Right, or, right, or gubernatorial, but.
Sorry, what, what are you talking about?
We, at the last planning board meeting.
Legalized in the state of Maine and the towns under the state law have the opportunity to ban it. To ban establishments, retail establishments from their community. But they have to enact an ordinance to do that. And if they don't enact an ordinance in time. And the state has licensing laws that come into effect and people meet those licensing laws, you could have establishments in town. And some folks may not want that, some may. So Todd went with the, before the select board on Tuesday or Thursday, I guess it was.
Thursday.
And submitted a request and a sample, uh, ordinance to ban. Retail establishments and.
Oilers.
Yeah. Bring your own bone.
Social class.
The BYOBs.
But right now, so they, the state isn't approving any licenses until February of twenty eighteen.
Correct.
So, we've got that, but still that.
But we only got one town meeting.
Yeah.
Right, I know, yes, so February. Right.
And special town meetings are expensive.
Yep.
It's like, it wasn't that expensive, it was like six hundred bucks, man, it wasn't that crazy expensive. When we asked the question, what a special town meeting costs.
Oh, really?
Yeah, everyone always talks, oh, we don't want the cost, but then really.
You got the clerk and all the other folks that are involved and so there's a lot of labor in town that doesn't come directly out of the check that has to be applied to it.
Yeah, we probably did once, I, last time I heard a number on it, it really wasn't like, wow, that shit. It's not the cost of a new fire truck, you know.
Is that checked to the school?
What's that?
Was that renting the school?
No, 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 when, the last time the conversation about a special town meeting, the cost, but it's the, the clerk's.
Oh, okay.
Ballot, the.
You know, noticing.
Right.
Yeah.
Protesting and. Anyway.
So.
Does that just include retail or, or manufacturing also?
Yep.
Okay, all of it.
Well, some of the manufacturing is a little bit, growing is a little bit funny because some of it falls under the medical.
The personal use it won't control, the, the, the retail, the, using it as a business, essentially, is what it's looking to curtail.
And from this community standpoint, I think, you know, the interesting thing is it was, since I've lived in town, they've issued their first liquor license in Durham. I mean, I remember the petition, I remember the petition, this was a dry town, uh, twelve years ago, I don't.
Oh, not even that.
Maybe shorter than that.
Is it?
Cause I remember the petition, I was living in the town with the petition, is it seven?
Seven years ago?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it was, we moved in.
Had you been here?
I think we had just moved in and we were like.
Just turned twenty-one.
Could only buy beer and wine.
Yeah.
That was it. Mister Man, we drink a lot of it.
Do you guys wanna look quickly at a few of the changes that I get around to making?
Yeah.
I don't know how to get it up there.
Do you have the, um, I just shut mine off.
Gotta plug in.
Can you, you have a projection availability in it, was it yours?
I don't know what that means.
I bet you do, it's a touchscreen, she's gotta have everything.
I don't know.
Julia, Julia, can you pull it up for me? I just shut mine off or I.
You're gonna put it on the wifi, check my wifi or you're gonna do it?
Well, how did you get yours on?
When I did, I used the cable.
I'm, I'm, mine does it.
Mine does it wirelessly.
Do we have a cable?
Yes. It's rather short, it's right here.
Oh, so I just.
Actually, sit in Paul's spot.
Sit in Paul's spot. I know, six years ago.
Oh, wow.
Seven years ago.
Are you new to the community?
New to Maine.
New to Maine, welcome, where'd you come from?
Providence, Rhode Island.
They're okay?
Uh, I'm from Massachusetts, so, it's all good.
And I moved here from Arkansas, so, you know, but I am from Maine, I'm from Maine, I was born and raised here.
No one can take that away from you.
Nope.
We do, where?
Where, Maine?
Mini HDMI. And that's the big one.
We got a lot of, a lot of relatives in Nobleboro.
Oh, yeah.
Camden area.
Yeah, 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 that's where I worked.
I lived up there for years.
Yeah.
I would like it, I would like it up there.
Oh, what do you need?
Yeah, it's pretty, it's very nice.
Do you know any of the Baldwins?
Big HDMI to little mini.
They're from Nobleboro line.
Nobleboro, friendship, baby, baby, friendship, no, 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 I don't. Yeah, friendship power. No, I don't think I know any of the Baldwins, I know a lot of Wichenbatches and. Um. Wichenbach?
Well, it wasn't batch, we called it Wichenbach, but.
Oh, really?
Yeah, Wichenbach.
There's a lot of them.
She doesn't have a projector program on her? You don't have anywhere to go up?
I don't know. Look under settings, look under, um, your display.
Wouldn't it just be, yeah, display settings? Wouldn't it treat a projector like any other screen? But I'd have to be hooked up to it.
Yes.
But somehow he gets it, he gets it wifi.
That has wifi capability.
But I can't even connect to wifi, so I'm not gonna connect to the.
You don't need the wifi to do, to get, to connect to that.
It has some kind of, it has its own thing.
It's like a, it's like a Bluetooth sort of type deal.
I'm sorry, I'm not gonna find it here.
I don't even know what I'm looking for.
Um, I have to start my computer up to tell you.
Go under display, try and.
Where's display?
Under settings.
Just go to the box.
Bottom left.
Okay, this is perhaps not worth it.
Do you?
I fixed the sign ordinance, I fixed the density, well, sort of, I have some questions on the density. And I started working on that criteria, that conditional use criteria.
Do you think?
Making them less effective.
Do you think you could make a presentation to the selectmen Tuesday?
Probably not, frankly.
Projecting?
Maybe.
I'm just asking.
Been like a month some help.
Cause I haven't heard from you.
Actually, I kinda respond to their name.
I think we've kind of had one master document that maybe.
Bounce back.
People have made changes on, but I.
But I was at the chamber annual dinner anyway, so. I couldn't have come, but.
Would we be able to use Dropbox or that, that's probably, is that allowed by the planning board to use something like Dropbox?
Well, I mean, they're public records, that's the only thing, but.
I know there was a lot of questions about who emailed and stuff.
I mean, we can't conduct business through Dropbox, but if we're just sharing documents that become part of the public. Record, that's fine. Um, how do you wanna get the refri- the giant boxes, do you think so would pick up or anything?
Is that how big they are?
They're pretty big. I mean, they'll, um, loveses, they'll fit in like an SUV.
We do have a truck, but they won't fit in my car.
How big's your car?
It's just an Altima, at least, it's just a regular.
I mean, you might be able to fit one at a time in your car.
Okay.
If you wanna make two trips.
I can bring my husband's truck.
What I can do is, when do you think you'll be coming by, like during the day or?
Oh, I don't know, I was, I don't know what your schedule's like.
Well, cause if we're not home, I can just leave them, we've got an old, uh, firehouse, we can just leave them there.
Okay.
Or if we're around.
Just the, the, the list, like where we were before, you know.
Entertaining a toddler.
I have a lot going on.
We can talk afterwards, um, whatever works, they're just hanging out. So, but they would be like fabulous little playhouses for a kiddo.
They're refrigerator box?
They're, actually, we bought love seats from Ikea.
What is it called?
Oh, nice.
And so they're like, they're probably, like laying flat, they're probably like this, this wide. And like this tall.
It's always good to have things to entertain a toddler in the middle of winter.
And they like, you can open up the flaps to create even more room and like, they've been really cool for a kiddo.
Why don't you just use a plug?
Because we don't have the right.
We don't have the right cord.
We can't email it to each other because.
There's no wifi.
Do we have a flash drive?
I'm gonna bring my life, my bag. I got wifi. You do?
Wait.
Oh, it's perfect.
I don't always have cell signal, but I got wifi.
Get your laptop back up?
I can plug mine.
You, you can plug yours in?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that then. Um, I will just give you the most recent version then. We're just gonna use that.
You're gonna use John's?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Did you get onto the projector before?
Yeah, I went on the projector last, last time we did this. For the physical connection.
Where the hell is it? I don't know where I saved it.
I fell on the ice this morning in front of the shop.
Oh, no.
Rock like this, I can't move that big a great.
Oh, no.
Oh, jeez, huh.
It's gonna really hurt in the morning.
Yeah.
It's just, it's so icy, and that little bit of snow on it.
It makes it, yeah. I did that a couple of weeks ago and I was holding Clara. Luckily, she didn't hit the ice or anything.
Says remove the right protection or use another disc.
Oh, is there a little switch on the side of that one? Maybe?
What, what is it that we need to do to the road standard?
Uh, I need to figure out what was going on in John's head.
We're gonna be here a while.
Cause he clearly put a lot of work in it, like there are all these, like.
You're so witty.
I don't remember anymore, cause it's been like four months since I did it.
I know. We had all these notes.
That's why I'll be here awhile, no one will know the answer, even John.
You had all these like notes in the ordinance itself and then you pulled everything out into an appendix somewhere.
Cause we put it all in, cause we were trying to put it all in one place, cause it was in subdivision, it was in performance standards, it was in conditional use.
So do I just delete where you had the notes?
Yeah.
One set of road standard.
Right. That was the goal. Now, we can just get it on the display.
I should probably save the rest of my crap before I do it.
Oh, I know what I gotta do.
Turn it on?
Hold your laptop up really high to it.
There we go.
Oh, man!
What, too many down?
There goes, got it.
Nice.
Cool.
So, do you mind if I?
This cable could be a little sharp, you drive.
Actually, not.
Why, why they have such a short.
Oh, yours is on a touchscreen.
No touchscreen, I'm not, I'm not that lucky.
I think my next computer will have a touchscreen, that's pretty cool. So.
Computer will have a computer.
So the biggest, I think the biggest changes I made since we last looked at this, and I haven't redlined anything because it would make everybody crazy.
Well, that's what I did on mine, it made you crazy, so.
Correct.
Yeah, you get red and green and all the other stuff, right?
So, if you remember, we, um, we talked about the Supreme Court decision a while ago and Paul sort of took a stab at drafting the sign ordinance. Um, which I didn't like, so I rewrote it. Now that I'm a control freak or anything, um, so this is what I came up with.
You have no idea, so easy, I just give her something and she does it, cause she has to change what I gave her, that's the whole key.
Just, just give her something.
Right, and like a key handle it.
Yeah, oh, that ain't working, I gotta rewrite it, okay.
Them.
We're still on, um, TV. We are, we know, yeah.
So basically, the Supreme Court case said that you can't distinguish between signs based on their content. And so our old, our existing ordinance has things relating to directory signs and yard sale signs and things like that. And so the sort of general rule in interpreting this case and applying this case is that if you have to read the sign to apply the law, you can't do it. Um, so this is sort of what we came up with and DOT has come up, well, state statute has changed somewhat for temporary signs. So that'll be like political signs and things like that in the right of way, which is different from on someone's property. So this is what I took based on Paul's and came up with. So we've always had the requirement that they can't be illuminated, which, by the way, has anyone driven by the Durham Leisure Center. Um, sign shall not exceed twenty-four square feet in total, which may be divided between up to two signs on the same lot, which was existing, we just tweaked it a little bit to make it more clear. Um, the height requirement was always in there, placement on of temporary signs in town roads, that should say right of ways.
Wait a minute, back to the Durham Leisure Center, is it, uh, flashing moving or?
It is.
You mean the, the campground?
Yeah.
The one right across from my house?
Yeah.
Yeah, my son, every time I drive by, mom, look, the lights, the lights, and then if they're not on, mom, where are the lights? Yeah, they're like, it's like that Christmas thing, you know, where they go.
Yeah, they like swirl.
Yeah, I was trying to decide if that was on purpose or it was just bad lighting, okay?
And it wasn't, I don't think it was like that last year.
No, it's a new, it's a new sign and, and new lights.
I, I, I have seen that for a while, obviously, I live right there, but I never, I never thought of this, like, I was like, oh, yeah.
Totally did, I was like, oh, dude.
So Title twenty-three, nineteen thirteen A of the state statute addresses those temporary signs. They either, it's written to hit things like yard sale signs and political signs, things like that. So that only applies to state roads, so what we did is basically just took it and said, okay, whatever rules are gonna apply to state road right of ways will also apply to town road right of ways. Um, we talked about whether we wanted to apply to flags, cause what if I just put a big sign and hung it on a flag and you guys said you didn't care?
But that, that wording though, the section shall not apply to the following.
Following flags.
Yeah, cause there were others, two.
Two.
Flags, I also did this at like midnight last night, um, and the section shall also not apply to signs erected or required by governmental bodies. So, do we have questions or comments or changes?
Next.
Okay, the next bigger piece that I tackled was the density, which we had so much fun, you guys remember the fun chart?
Oh, yeah.
So, well, let me start on the one that I did not screw up, and then we can talk about the one that I've been having trouble with. So rural residential, um, I took it and put it in a chart, hopefully that makes a little more clear than what we've got. So minimum lot size per dwelling is ninety thousand square feet, so a dwelling is defined as sort of a self-contained building. Um, so if you had two single families, that's two dwellings. So minimum lot size per dwelling is ninety thousand square feet, which is like two acres, right?
Just slightly over.
Um, minimum road frontage is three hundred feet for everything, in rural residential, you can't have more than a two unit. Frontline setbacks, sideline setbacks, rearline setbacks are all the same. Structure height is the same, um, and then it's minimum density that I changed. So we had talked about, we, we've had that section in our ordinance that we've always struggled with whether they apply to accessory apartments or not. Um, and what we came up with was it's gonna be ninety thousand square feet per dwelling unit. So if you have a full dwelling unit, so maybe you've got a duplex, you've gotta have a hundred and eighty thousand square feet. If one of your dwelling units is an accessory apartment and we had talked about, I need to do this in the definitions, distinguish between a dwelling unit and accessory apartment. And we had talked about making an accessory apartment either a studio or a one bedroom, whereas a dwelling unit would be, um, more than that. I don't know how we're gonna do that in the definitions, but that's what we had talked about. Maximum lot coverage for impervious surface, huh, they fixed, because in both sections, in the growth district and the rural residential, we had had that you could have structure coverage of up to like thirty percent from municipal, but impervious surface of only twenty-five percent. So that didn't make sense, so I got rid of the structure coverage and just put in the impervious surface. Um, and this one has a minimum building envelope. And then I put all the, the notes into footnotes to try.
So if somebody doesn't have a four, forty thousands of basically in a buildable area of an acre on a, on a lot, they can't build on it.
That's, that's the building, and that's there, I pulled that from the current ordinance.
So what does that do to that lot over on Patriot Way? Is there, is there forty thousand square feet on that one, isn't that your lot? One on the corner over there?
Jeez, it must be, in the building anymore? It's always been forty thousand.
Okay.
I'd have to look, I have it up in the chart.
You've got all kinds of weapon and stuff on that one lot, there's some stuff in there that restricts that.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's subdivision, so that was already approved.
It was approved.
And so if they screwed it up, it's their problem.
Um, in Southwith Bend, I did the same thing, I just rearranged it, but I messed up, I was having a hard time figuring out the density and how to express that. Cause if you, we decided if you have one unit or two units, you're only required to have ninety thousand square feet. So it's not a per dwelling unit density at that point. Um. So I couldn't, I don't know, I wrote that wrong and I, I haven't thought enough about it to get it right.
So, and, and according to that right there, with one and two family, with one and two dwelling units per lot, you need ninety thousand square feet, but five hundred feet of road front.
Five hundred, twenty-five.
Minimum road frontage, one to two dwelling units, you can do a duplex on two hundred and fifty feet of road front, is that right?
Right.
Okay.
And maybe I should say one or two.
Yeah.
Um, but the density, I think everyone gets it, but it's not expressed correctly, cause density is per unit typically, um.
Density is usually considered per unit.
Right.
So that's.
Well, we want the same, not really.
The one and two dwelling units at ninety thousand square feet?
What did you say as the one above it?
No, cause ninety thousand is required for one.
And ninety, we're keeping the same density for two.
So it's not per.
Right, so you don't need a bigger lot, you can do a duplex on a single lot.
Right, but density is usually expressed per unit. Basically, I just, I gotta figure out how to, the lawyer in me needs to figure out how to make it correctly expressed by density.
Well, can we say, for the one, one or two dwelling units, can we say something like ninety thousand minimum?
So what, so what, what if you didn't try to include one and two in the same thing and just put in another line item, one dwelling unit's ninety thousand square feet, two dwelling units is a hundred and ten thousand square feet, anything over three.
But it's not, we decided to leave it.
But you. Oh, alright.
So what's there?
So one dwelling unit says ninety thousand, two dwelling unit says ninety thousand.
Cause what's in there now is ninety thousand plus two thousand square feet for each additional unit, twenty thousand, I'm sorry, and twenty-five feet of road frontage.
Twenty. Yeah.
Right, and we, I think we tweaked that slightly.
We decided to in, increase density in the growth district.
Yeah. Oops.
Above two, okay. Now, was the dwelling unit thing in the, in the current ordinance based on a duplex or no?
It says multi-family housing density, that was the whole thing, they got some of those correct.
Well, and that's the problem is it was just, it was, it was written poorly, which is why we kept effing it up when we, and, yeah.
Yeah, cause a duplex is different than two separate structures.
Apply it. Right, uh, you're just not separate.
I think Ann wanted to almost completely strike that duplex piece, didn't she?
Well, we went into the definitions and there was some confusion there, because it asked, there's, what it was is that you use multifamily, um, housing in one section and some other wording in another.
Well, it refers to two family in some places and duplex in other places.
Right, that's right.
I feel like what, it's been a while, I feel like what we decided is that we didn't, we didn't wanna differentiate between a duplex and two dwellings.
Well, I think we do, I mean, so a dwelling is different than a dwelling unit, cause we've still got a ninety thousand square foot minimum lot size, which is different than density. Um, per dwelling, so if you have two separate dwellings, and if you look at the definition of dwelling, you're gonna have to have a hundred and eighty thousand square feet. So if you want your house and a guest house, a hundred and eighty thousand square feet.
So two dwelling units equals a duplex, which is not calling it a duplex.
Two dwelling units, yes, okay.
Can you rule out the lot size, cause I think it just says lot size, right?
It says minimum lot, no, it's.
Minimum size per dwelling.
Yeah, minimum lot size per dwelling.
I got you, okay.
So we have to make sure that we are clear on our definition of dwelling.
So one dwelling is ninety thousand square feet, two dwellings is ninety thousand square feet, is that, that's not?
Two, no, two dwellings would be a hundred and eighty thousand square feet, and that's the problem, is we're really trying to get to lot size, but we're using density, which is a weird.
Yeah.
Which is just a weird way to do it.
Yeah.
Should we do it differently then? I don't know.
So when, in yellow, I scroll it down just one, one more line.
Yellow, I confused myself.
Alright, dwelling units, two dwelling units or one dwelling unit and one accessory apartment is ninety thousand square feet. Right?
So a dwelling and a dwelling unit are two different things?
Correct.
Yeah.
A dwelling unit is basically an independent living, a, a, a group of rooms that's intended for independent living, whereas a dwelling could house
Several.
multiple dwelling units.
Yeah, apartment houses has mult, it's a, has multiple dwelling units, but it's a dwelling.
It's a dwelling.
Okay. So, I'll figure it out, um, I know Todd hated this, but, um, I haven't made it to the others, what else did I change? Probably it, oh, I started messing with the. You know how we currently have in our ordinance, we have the approval criteria and then we have the performance standards? They're supposed to match with the perfor, with the approval criteria, but they don't. Um, so I've been trying to fix that, so, um, for example, the proposed use will not re, result in undue air pollution. And then what we need to consider in, um, in evaluating that, the piece I struggled with is, so the proposed use will not result in undue air pollution, that was a, a a criteria, that could not be waived, however, these sort of, um, factors could be waived in writing by us. Uh, so what I did, as I said, the factors to be considered is met, may be waived by the planning board upon request of the applicant. Honestly, I don't know if we even need to do that, if they're factors to be considered, I don't think we have to find that each one is met, um, but you guys can tell me.
You need to fix that second paragraph, go up, go up one.
I do.
Yeah, a waiver may only be granted if, in all instances, the burden of proof shall be on the applicant and such burden of proof shall include.
So this is what happens when I drafted the night.
It's alright.
I had like two gallons of coffee that was blocking the complain, if I'd known, we could drop some by.
I drank about six cups of tea the other day and was pacing around the office for about two hours, finally Shannon said, what is the matter with you, you're pacing everywhere?
Um, but I, I guess my question is whether that waiver piece is even required. So what they have to show, for example, in this first one, is the proposed use will not result in undue air pollution, we have to consider factors A, B, and C.
We don't have to find all of them.
Yeah, you have to, right?
No, I mean, if we just have to consider them, I think that's different and we can put in language that, you know, they're guidelines. Or whatever, but at the end of the day, what we have to make a finding on is that the proposed use will not result in undue air pollution. And that's sort of how our ordinance is currently set up, but it requires a written waiver from us, so, which we haven't been doing. Um, you know, so instead of making a finding specifically that emissions of any particular matter, gash, material will not cause soiling of any material beyond the lot line, we haven't been specifically considering that factor and or waiving it in writing.
So what you have, what you have there is good then, right, shall consider.
Yeah, and we can make it, yeah, maybe we can make it clear that they're.
So we could consider, we're considering those.
But in writing, any finding of fact just needs to, say that your conclusionary statements just need to state it, that's writing, right, doesn't that?
No, as our ordinance is currently written, we should have been making findings on each of these sub-criteria.
Right.
On each of these performance standards or giving them a written waiver in writing, you don't need to show that, you know, particular matter will not cause soiling beyond the lot line. And they, they, it was not just that we had to waive it in writing, they had to request a waiver in writing.
Right, they had to request it in writing.
Which nobody's doing and we're not making these specific findings, I mean, that's not how we're applying the ordinance, we're saying, okay, does it result in undue air pollution? And usually we're like, no, this is an accessory apartment.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um.
Stop cooking beans.
Chain smokers, I don't know. Um. So undue water pollution, I pulled that in.
Water pollution.
Sufficient water, um, to provide for the needs, I pulled those criteria in. So the soil piece is a little tough, cause we have general performance standards, so I've just been trying to, to smoosh these together and, and streamline it, and obviously I did not get all that far. Um, but that's the goal.
How much more do you have?
All of these, and then Paul wrote something on landscaping and buffering that also does not make any sense to me.
See, you just put it up.
You were supposed to rewrite it, it wasn't supposed to make sense.
I thought we came up with something as a group, that we were all like, yeah, good.
Paul maybe presented it to us in one of the meetings, we put it up, cause it was in the dr, version I had that was up on the screen at one point.
Yeah, and, and Ann wanted to tweak it a little.
Cause I have it separately, I mean, you. Cuz I have it separately. I have, you emailed it to me separately. I don't think I ever saw it in the ordinance. And that's what I'm struggling with. It's not that they don't make sense, it's that they don't make sense within the.
I went through and re, I tried to reorganize the ordinance, doing just exactly what you're trying to do.
Right.
And I don't know if that's what I got to John or not, but.
I don't know.
I think you got mine for you.
Yeah, I think I sent the version that I had worked on to you two.
Yeah.
And I got back your red lines in it, as well as a couple separate, which didn't make sense to me. And then I got back a separate sheet from you on landscaping and buffering.
Yeah, I just took and rewrote it so that you could look at it. If you liked it, put it in. If you didn't, change it and then put it in.
Basically, you just fix it, Ann.
Yeah.
You sent you a bunch of mumbo jumbo and. Well, no, it wasn't bad.
No, I mean, it all makes sense and they're good standards. They just, um, I've gotta figure out how to tweak things. Right, right, and just make it fit in. Cuz we've moved a lot of stuff and I think the goal is to continue to move stuff. Into the general performance standards. And so when we go through our conditional use checklist, we'll go through the specific conditional uses, but we'll also have to go through the general performance standards.
Oh, I know what confused you about what I sent, cuz I took everything out that was in all the different places of the ordinance and then stuck them in one piece of paper.
Kind of like I do with the roads, but then where do you put that piece?
And then I, and then I did them in green and red and various things and Ann just looked at that and threw it in the trash.
Right, right, exactly. I didn't throw it in the trash, it was on my desktop.
Still there.
So, um, yeah, there's just, there's a lot of work and. And it's hard cuz we do it in bits and pieces and we talk about it and then we don't think about it for two months.
Alright, no, then you forget what you talked about and then you forget what you thought about.
Alright.
Then it's two months later again.
What do you need us to do, Ann, anything?
Just gonna ask that. I don't know, somebody else do it.
We're gonna have to understand what's going on in your head.
I know, right?
You're trying to understand what's going on in John's head, so then.
How about we go to work for you in Poland? You stay home.
Yeah. If I had my one full day on, just to do this, I could get it done.
We'll do your job.
Your car ain't gonna start tomorrow morning.
Don't you have any sick leave or something?
We're all gonna end up feeding a horse.
I was just thinking, if, if Ja, if John will give her a ride home, we'll just go fly and all four retire.
Uh, I can work from home.
Without Wi-Fi.
So.
Attached garage.
Oh, Paul, the thing I needed from you is erosion control as well. I have a paw.
Thought they said real. I cannot read from here.
Really?
Did, did I redo that one?
No.
Are you sure?
Yes. You did. This is what you gave me. Oh, my battery is running low. Where did it go? Actually, maybe I didn't save it. Maybe it's in my email. Why is it buffering? Yeah, no, I don't have it.
Do we want our battery to go completely dead or we wanna give her power?
So, um. So if you guys are okay with the signage and the density pieces that I put in. Um, I can fix that one density piece and just keep plugging away at the conditional use, rearranging that and then I'll figure out where your road standards go. This'll be the first weekend that I haven't been either traveling or working, so maybe I'll get stuff done.
Sounds like fun.
We wait.
And then it's like three more weekends after that before I have another weekend off, so. So, I can keep plugging on this. I don't know what our timeframe is to get to town meeting. I don't know where you wanna go from here. Um. Yeah, desperately. So.
So, is there a possibility to bring it to the Selectman Tuesday or is it too much to do this weekend?
Well, we'd have to vote on it first. The planning board have to vote to accept it first. So what we can do is we can see if I get my act together. And actually get it to you guys this weekend. And if we do, maybe we can hold a, you know, twenty-minute meeting.
On Monday?
On Monday, you know, or whatever, I don't know.
Yeah.
We will come to the comp plan meeting.
I plan on going anyway, so.
On Monday?
Cool, yeah. Six thirty, right, John?
I don't even know.
You'll both be up there at six thirty and no one else will.
That's what it was.
I think our comp plans are six thirty.
Six thirty, this is the only seven o'clock meeting in town.
Do you know when the meeting is?
No, I think it'll be on Monday.
You have a meeting on Monday. Time apparently is six thirty.
Six thirty.
Thank you.
For what, the comp plan? I don't know, I'm not on.
So, soil erosion.
Erosion, yeah.
You don't have jobs for the rest of us.
Timeline.
I feel not helpful.
Alright, so are we good for tonight?
I don't know why I can't copy this to my desktop.
We'll review.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Do I hear motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Second. Oh, I second.
All those in favor? Thank you, all.